I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. Within the storm, within the fire, when I feel hopeless, you're by my side. So I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. Throughout the day, throughout the years, and all my sorrow and in all my fears, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out.
There can't be no light if darkness don't exist. He never left my sight. He showed me the way. Out of all the storms raging at the sea, he gave me back my life. I owe him everything. Rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord forever and always. I rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord always. He carried me to shore.
Throughout the day, throughout the years, and all my sorrow and in all my fears, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out. There can't be no light if darkness don't exist. He never left my sight. He showed me the way. Out of all the storms raging at the sea, he gave me back my life. I owe him everything. Rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord forever and always. I rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord always. He carried me to shore. There can't be no light if darkness don't exist. He never left my sight. He showed me the way. Out of all the storms raging at the sea, he gave me back my life. I owe him everything. Rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord forever and always. I rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord always. He carried me to shore. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. Throughout the day, throughout the years, and all my sorrow and in all my fears, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out. There can't be no light if darkness don't exist. He never left my sight. He showed me the way. Out of all the storms raging at the sea, he gave me back my life. I owe him everything. Rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord forever and always. I rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord always. He carried me to shore. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. Throughout the day, throughout the years, and all my sorrow and in all my fears, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. Throughout the day, throughout the years, and all my sorrow and in all my fears, I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am empty and all dried up, when I feel lonely and I'm not enough, I'm calling out for you. When all my plans start to come undone and there's no one there to see me through. When all my strength has been overcome and there's nothing left for me to do but tell the truth. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you. When I am strong, when I am weak, if I feel forgotten, you remember me. I'm calling out for you. I'm calling out for you.
There can't be no light if darkness don't exist. He never left my sight. He showed me the way. Out of all the storms raging at the sea, he gave me back my life. I owe him everything. Rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord forever and always. I rejoice, rejoice, rejoice in the name of the Lord always. He carried me to shore. I know it's a little hard to say. Yeah. Well, it's all around here, I'm sure. But yeah. Right? Everyone's breathing with somebody. Okay. So, okay. Yeah. Oh, yes, thank you. I told you. Oh, look at him. This guy. He's probably got one. He's probably got one. He's probably got one. Yeah. Yeah, because it's a, you know, the, the words are, are good when you have a problem after you've already been elected. But when you're voting, you can vote for whoever you want. So it's kind of like you guys are all the same. Yeah. And then we'll draw, we'll paper reverse, uh, draw for, oh, thank you. For, um, see who goes first. Okay. That's all right. I was just gonna, I would buy it after that. Okay.
I didn't know that a lot of time.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
I mean, we don't want to.
Yeah. Well, it's all around here, I'm sure. But yeah. Right? Everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Yeah.
Hey, what's going on?
Oh, yes, thank you. I told you. Oh, look at him. This guy.
With water.
Yeah, he's probably got one. He's probably got one.
No, he didn't.
He's probably got one. He wants to. Yeah. Yeah, because it's a, you know, the, the words are, are good when you have a problem after you've already been elected. But when you're voting, you can vote for whoever you want. So it's kind of like you guys are always.
Yeah.
You know? And, and then we'll draw. We'll, we'll papers for Bruce. Uh, draw for, oh, thank you. For, um, see who goes first.
Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, I would buy it after. I was like, I, I guess I didn't even realize.
That would have stuck me at one.
I, I, I've done these for, um, like seven days. How I know that, but I've actually. Chapter, um, so I'm gonna speak on the, here in here. And we have our notes. It's kind of new. It's a little different.
It's a little. A lot of letters.
Yeah. It's, yeah. I think the, the, it's, I like the remainder.
Yeah, that's, that was smart. It looked quite a few, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. Yes.
He's playing right now.
If you want to have a save or you want to offer it. Hey. Yeah, Ginny, well, she, um, and, uh.
How's the sound?
She said if you want to use his.
Shell? Is the sound coming in good?
Yeah, sound is okay.
I don't know how I want to hear it.
Sound is okay.
There you go.
Probably. Oh, yeah. His brother, his brother is like.
That was the voice my brother was.
Yeah.
My dad would have that voice then.
Oh, yeah. TJ, you're supposed to be. And it's buffering. Are y'all on the wifi here or? Yeah, I got them. And it's still buffering.
I had to.
Um, so.
I had to shut this off.
I can hear you. Yes, you're up here, sorry. I didn't know. Up here on the, in the, um, orange chair. So. I'm glad you came to me out. I'm excited. If you'd be generous, I'd welcome it.
I can hear you.
For interruptions, you have three minutes. I can, I can.
You can hear me?
Cut four, I give some more directions. Um, and then afterwards, if you want to say, and answer the questions with your hands. They talk to you if you want.
Where? Bring it in there.
And then this is one. This is one. That was about kids. Um, and I'll say again. Sure. We're gonna draw numbers to see the managers, you know, which were the managers going. So do you wanna go? He did, I have that.
All right. Are you gonna learn? Good, good. Nice thing.
He's having connections or can he?
I can't hear you.
It, I don't know if you can hear me, but. It's all good.
Now talk to me.
All good. It's all good. Good. We're good. We are good, Larry. Yeah, I know.
Okay. On the line. I like, I like. But I like, I didn't need. And I.
Yeah, I can hear you. But I don't know what the TV doing, you do. Behind, like. I don't know, 15, 20 seconds?
Yeah. Uh, mi- minimum, probably more, 30, 40 second. Terrible.
You're coming in broken up.
Yeah.
It's all good. All good. It's all good. Good. We're good.
Okay. If you say so. I don't say so. I know.
Did you get what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's obvious.
Uh, main channel, probably the morning, starting at 4:00.
Um.
Terrible.
I think that would die. It's a little hot. Me. But it's buffering, but it may be because I'm inside. Whenever.
Keep waiting.
I guess. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. I'm sorry.
This is first time.
Yeah. I heard.
Look, you wait.
Right, big. Just to get the score.
It's the lighting. Yep. We want to need more chairs. Chairs, chairs. That's true.
Oh, yeah. We better try. All right.
Yeah. Actually, it's hot up there.
That's good.
About, you know. Yeah. We can get, we can get on chairs. And soon they, uh, set up for this.
Larry.
Yeah. It'll be a huge success.
How do you mute your phone?
Mute TV. Mute the TV.
Can you mute it?
Or you can make it go by.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know. If you can, you can hear me, I'm gonna. Start the record at five minute countdown.
I know you had a lot. Well, we did it one year in TV. And, um, and yeah. And, uh. It's actually. And I can't. Spend a lot, I spend a lot of time. You need to, the best of one month. All right. Part is dead. No. Yeah, that's a lot.
Okay, this is. Building cost.
For sure.
Nope.
To me, yes.
Can it? Close to.
Oh, he's playing the playlist.
I had.
Looked at it a lot of times.
I tried. It worked out.
We're moving, we're moving. At least what they're saying at home. Buffalo.
Yeah.
You show me.
Yeah, I agree. I, I.
They retire hard.
Larry, 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 Larry. Larry, 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 Larry.
So is that different? I didn't want to, just in case. That's what you do.
And it's working good. And you're popping up. Come on, we promised everything.
Now you gotta do it. That's how it works.
All right, all right, you ready? We're ready. Okay. Welcome to the 2025 Henrietta City Council Forum hosted by the Henrietta Chamber of Commerce. My name is Amber Morata and this is Bruce Jones. We're gonna go over the ground rules a little bit and sorry I'm facing this way but, um, but I need to be facing guys. Um, okay, so the first, first rule, uh, no personal attacks by any candidate. Each candidate will be able to answer questions with no interruptions from other candidates. So please refrain from responding or saying anything when it's not your turn. We drew numbers at the beginning, we'll go in that order, um, and everyone will get their three minutes. Um, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves before questions and answer section of the forum, um, and three questions will be asked and the candidates will have three minutes to answer. At the end of the question sections, each candidate will be given three minutes to summarize and lay their platform. So if we don't have any questions from our candidates, we'll go ahead and get started. Okay.
The order which people have drawn the numbers. Sean, you, uh, were number one. Jennifer, yours is number two. Doc, you're number three, and Tristan, you got the tail end, you got number four.
We'll get us started.
All right, Sean.
My name is Sean Muzan. I'm a third generation Henrietta, Henrietta graduate of 1992. Nice. And I graduated from Connors, Mesaw, in 1985. Did the night audit at Holiday Inn Bonneville College. Also had a work-study program in the county at the federal building in Meskewee during that time. For the last 22 years, I've worked in wealth management. First eight years with Bank of Oklahoma. And the last 15 years with...
That's not a way to term that.
I don't think there's volume. How about I get a little closer? So I've worked the last 22 years in wealth management. I have first eight years with Bank of Oklahoma, the last 15 years with Argen Financial Group. Uh, I believe we're the largest independent wealth management company in the United States. We have 90 billion in tradable assets. So a lot of, lot of math background. And I'm excited about the opportunity of being able to use those skills to help my hometown out, or help with budget. I feel like I'm fully prepared to be a big contribution.
Thank you. Jennifer, you're at the top.
I think everybody here knows who I am. I'm Jennifer Munholland. I'm also third generation. We own and operate Fountainman, a nursing home, the largest individually owned employer in the city. I've been on the council for 12 years. Never missed a city council meeting for 10 years straight. Have done a little bit of that lately because 10 years is a long time, 12 years is a long time, and four more years is a really long time. I've done the best I can do for the city of Henrietta. I've helped bring lots of businesses to Henrietta. Nancy Wadley actually sent me flowers today for helping bring show me seeing Henrietta Quick Trip. That was imperative in getting in here. Taco Buino and Burger King. I was directly involved in bringing them to Henrietta and making sure that happened. The million gallon water storage shed that we have, we had seven days to get the grant done for that. Myself, Ronnie Duke, and Kristi Jeffco went door to door every night for about five nights to try to make that happen. We made it happen and we got the water storage shed, or we would not have 24-hour backup water right now. So I'm running again. Obviously, nobody else signed up besides my opponent, Jermaine Ward. And I feel like Henrietta's come this far and we need to keep it moving forward and I don't want to see it regress. So that's why I'm here today.
You, Mr. Scherer.
Doug Hugh got the microphone.
I think he turned it off.
One, two, one, two, there we go. Okay, thanks. Thanks for being here tonight. I was born and raised in Henrietta in the 40s and 50s. After graduation, I attended Oklahoma State University, received a bachelor's degree in ROTC Commission into the United States Army as a second lieutenant. Within a year of active duty, I volunteered for Vietnam. After active duty, I returned back to Oklahoma State to obtain a master's in business administration degree, which I also was awarded. I then moved to Houston. Within a year, I started my own business, a residential construction company, constructing bid market custom homes and a premier physical development. Within two years, I started a commercial construction company, initially focusing on retail leases and shopping centers, which progressed to shopping center construction and development, dental offices, industrial field vaults, one, two-story office buildings. I also put together a group to develop a franchise in North Dallas, Texas market. Other achievements during this period include, I created a class taught 300 small business owners on how to develop your own small business building using the SBA 504 loan. I also served as a FEMA inspector for multiple disasters throughout Texas. I was involved in numerous city and church projects to university vision. I went to first church in a Texas prison that was an experience. I was also on the board of directors and served one term as president of Gulf Coast Pancourse Club. Then in about eight, about 2000, due to the market and family demands, I initiated a plan to move closer to Henrietta. I was recruited by multiple regional firms in various capacities. I worked on Super Walmarts, Sam clubs, and large boxes. A few years later, I was recruited by an independent international company to oversee all phases of a four-year, $200 million permanent housing privatization project for the Air Force. The monthly draw on the project was over 200 pages. A few facts on that development include the following. Over the station of destruction, 562 new homes, 200,000 gallon water tower, three-bay satellite fire station, 8700 square foot community building, miles of streets, curbs, and sidewalks, renovation of 229 registered historic units. We also updated a demo of 200 units from the early 50s. Identified $23 million on project savings. I was also responsible for a monthly report that was dispatched to various stakeholders and senior management, including the Pentagon, Air Force, Senior Command, and so on. After returning to Henrietta in 2010, I was recruited by a nationwide static company on three contracts and worked as a quality control manager, assistant project manager, and a project manager. Some certifications I never, oh, Tennessee, is that, uh?
Hi, how are y'all doing? Tristan Dimon here. I graduated 2002 Henrietta nights. I went on from there to obtain a bachelor's degree at Oklahoma Baptist University in history. Um, I actually have three minors with that, education, psychology, and history. One thing that I believe about Henrietta is in the community. And that's one thing that you can see, I believe, more than anything. That's why I'm wondering, one of the, try to be as active as I can within this community. I believe that Henrietta is a place that can become a destination stop and not just a stop along the highway. But I think there's a few things that we can do. And I've been here since, uh, I'm the eighth generation here. And many of you know Joseph Harden, the photographer that was here. That was my great-grandfather and we have been here pretty much since statehood. I think that Henrietta has a great opportunity and that's one reason why I decided to run for council. I, I, I just believe that we're heading in the right direction and don't want to see that change.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with our first question. Sean, you'll go first. What you want to see accomplished in your first year on the city council?
In my first year, I think one of the biggest things we need to do is gonna be budget focused and it's going to center around coming up with a budgeted plan to start fixing the streets. I, I'll get into more detail about that later, but another thing I'd like to do is start working on bringing in more revenue in the opportunities we come across, or especially hotel, I would love for us to get a new hotel. I think that should be a priority. And those are the, those will, those will be the main focuses and just have, be, have a fiscal budget, like, physically responsive.
Will you repeat the point? Yes. Uh, but, but do you want to see accomplished in the next year of the city council, please?
So I've been on here for 12 years. So with that being said, there's been a lot of ups and downs, new businesses come to town. But until you're in it and you see what's there, you have no idea how it works. And I'm sure that Mr. Van Meter can say that too, that it's, it's a whole... So in the next year, working on the budget is always a challenge, trying to find where to put that money. I don't know, other than trying to recruit business, which I've always done, I don't know that there's a huge significant change that I could see, that I could do, other than help recruit businesses to come to town to help generate more tax base, because the tax base is what feeds it all. And we don't get money from the county. Everybody thinks, oh, I paid my property tax, why didn't you fix the streets with that? That does not occur. Our tax dollars come from our city tax money and that's what we get to take care of business in the city of Henrietta. So if you want to know why the county isn't fixing our roads, talk to the county, but as far as the city, we're doing the best we can do with the money that we have at hand. Thank you.
The, uh, first thing that I would propose to do would be to have a budget for, uh, budget deficiency committee. And that would be involved with several professionals that have a, uh, background and career development experience in various needs that the town has, although it forces the roads, uh, certainly the, uh, having a planning here would, would get a big boost. But we also got the, uh, Nichols Park situation that's going on and it needs to be developed. And, uh, you know, the, the biggest thing is to strategic, having a strategic business plan for all of what we're talking about tonight. So here for 15 years, since, uh, 2010, after returning to take care of my mother, and the thing that I've, uh, observed is that there's never been a strategic business plan done. I think that's first and foremost. From that, you're gonna be able to develop committees that are gonna be instrumental in accomplishing the tasks that you wanna accomplish. Uh, there's money here to do what needs to be done, and I can pretty well assure you, it's just not being appropriated right. So the things that, uh, uh, what would be a big accomplishment, another big accomplishment, which I plan to speak on later is, uh, getting citizens involved, okay? Uh, they've all, uh, abandoned going to city council meetings, from my experience. So the town hall meetings that we had there a couple of years at the, at the high school cafeteria would be re-instituted and the citizens would be allowed to come up there and voice their opinions on what needs to be done and so on and so forth. That's a proportion of what my role should be.
There are several things that I would like to try to explore and look into within the first year. The first thing's been touched upon, broadening, broadening our revenue services. We have to figure a way to broaden our revenue more than just water, sales tax, and hotel tax. Talisol, about 60 miles from here, started in 2011 selling their own electric through Grand River Dam. Within the last 12 to 13 years, they have been able to bring over five to 10 million dollars in revenue, in additional revenue, to their town. They've been able to use it for streets, they've been able to use it for stop signs, for everything else that you can think of under the sun, due to them starting to broaden their horizons and looking into other things. Um, one of the other things that I would like to look into is a TSET grant for the state, uh, for the city. And a TSET grant allows you, as a municipality, to apply for a grant that will help you either refurbish parks, or build a wellness center, or any kind of other thing that may be a tobacco-free space. That's what the TSET grant is there for. But your, your municipality, your, your city council and your, your members have to be able to be the ones to go and file for that. And then adult education is another thing, for those that are not battling our county and our city. And with that, if we can engage our citizens and help bring their educational levels up, we can make more productive citizens with that. And so I would like to maybe try to start expanding and looking at GED programs and maybe start a GED class within our city to help our citizens become more informed, to become more productive citizens.
I mean, I know you already drew it, but I think maybe if we rotate who answers the questions instead of him having to answer the question first every time, I think, I think it's... I don't mind, I mean, if you want me to go first, I don't care, but I think if we just rotate...
First question with Sean, the second question, we start with you. Third, third question, we start with Doug, fourth question with Tristan. Is that fair with you guys?
I just felt like maybe he was getting a little picked on, fresh with everything.
Spotlight's got to be on...
I did it. I know you all just did what you thought was best, but...
Spotlight's got to be on someone.
All right, then the second question will start with Jennifer.
Jennifer, a major retailer is considering locating in Henrietta. What would you write in a letter promoting the town and encouraging them to come to town?
Done this many times. So first and foremost, we have two major highways that run through our town, so there are people here all the time. That's not an issue. We've done all of the studies. They know how many people come through. We can provide them with the appropriate studies for that. We know the income level, we know the rooftops. We have all of that readily available. As far as building space, we know where that is, we know what's available. We also know what ODOT's willing to do to help them, what ODOT can do to help them, what PETA can do to help them, and what we can offer them if they come to us. So the big thing they're looking for right now is tax breaks, incentives to come, and how we're going to help them make their business be proficient in our town. So if we can help them, they help us in the long run, and that's what we've done with the other business to get them here. So it's recruitment and reaching out to them, making that connection, and letting them know, hey, we're here. We're going to be there the long road. We're not walking away anytime soon, and allowing them to have the opportunity to come meet, greet, and enjoy our city and see what's here. Because Henrietta is a small town, but we all come together when we need to, and getting businesses together is the only way to make our city grow.
Thank you. So that will pass on to Buck then, since we're going to take it down that way.
Yes, depending on what type of retail business it is would be a major factor, okay? Whether it's going to be on the highway or downtown, et cetera. So I think you have to give it a broader, better, broader look than that, because some things are going to be positive for a potential retailer on the highway as opposed to being on downtown maybe right now. You know, that's just, that's just a clarity on what cleanup that needs to be done in the city to shine it up, so to speak, and beautify it. So the, depending on who it is, the strategic business plan I mentioned earlier would be a huge plus to have that, say that, this is where we're going, this is our strategic business plan for the next five years, and this is our, this year's, and this is what we're doing to make it successful. We've got a plan here, we're a part of it. So again, depending on what type of business we're talking about and how many people we're bringing with us to be employed would dictate how we handle the situation.
Thank you, sir. Tristan, you're up.
All right. Now, what was the question again?
We've got a major retailer considering locating here in Henrietta. What would you write in a letter to encourage them to come?
I think we would have to expand on the melting pot that Henrietta is. It's not just rodeos and attraction sites, but we actually have a lot of communal heart here, and you're going to have to be able to show that to the business that wants to come in. You know, as they talk about tax breaks and bringing them in with the investments, we absolutely have to figure out the best thing that works for them, but also what works for us as a city, and that will balance out and be beneficial to both parties, not just one. And being able to showcase our area is a big deal. You know, putting them in together with the Chamber of Commerce, making sure that they know who everyone is, and they feel welcomed and invited in within the community is going to be a big deal, and just doing some things that can help reach out to them, I think that would help out.
Thank you. Sean, we got down to you now. Do I need to repeat it, or?
No, I think I do. The, I mean, the obvious would be to point out the premier location, both the highways, and also point out, like, all the successful businesses that's opened in the last 10 years, and how they've done well, show them those type of numbers. And just point out that, let them get to know the community, because it's very much a family-type atmosphere, and I think they would, they would enjoy bringing their families here to run the business.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, start with Buck. Okay, Buck, we're going to start with you. How would you get more citizens involved in Henrietta in government activities, events, and business?
Say that again.
How would you get more citizens involved in Henrietta in government activities, events, and business?
I appreciate that. Well, first of all, I think the comment I made regarding the town halls would get citizens more involved to come into that, execute on committees, because they would be running the town hall committee, committee, meeting. They would be bringing, a part of the town hall meeting would be for citizens to be involved with the cleanup, okay? That's kind of behind-the-scenes activity that'd be, drag it towards them. So if they get involved in that, and they have a street captain, or a ward captain, or however you want to look at it, you get them involved by assisting their, their needs, because they're going to be coming to this committee, the town hall meeting, because they got issues, okay? That's going to drive it there, and then from there, we just develop what they would like to see compared to what the city needs, so on and so forth. So I think getting citizens involved is a very, very important piece of this. I saw that on the line, that's a great question.
Tristan?
I think the biggest thing that we have to do is transparent. You know, we have a city government page that allows no one to comment on it on social media when we have things that kind of assert our citizens from speaking their voice, and they may not feel as heard. You know, just starting to take care of some of the issues that they see around town, cleaning up the parks, leading more cleanup we can, and trying to really establish ourselves as an open citizen government. So many times, I think in the past, people have felt that they weren't heard when they came to our meetings, and they've kind of just distanced themselves away from that. You know, we do a Henrietta community-wide Christmas dinner, and we try to engage everyone at this Christmas dinner. We invite everybody that we can, and so it's always been something that we try to get more and more people in every year, and roughly we serve anywhere from 200 to 300 people. And you can almost do the same thing with the city government, have a deal, do a hot block, just do something to open yourselves up to your citizenry.
I think the best way we could go about that would just be to be more active, go to events and talk to people in person, let them know that we care, that we care about their opinion, and want to know how we can help them, and encourage them to come to the town hall, and speak their voice, and let them know what we can do.
Thank you.
Me? This is difficult, because it's Henrietta's built-up clique. We all know this. So it's difficult to get everybody to come together for the betterment of the city of Henrietta. We have city hall meetings. We don't need separate city hall meetings. We have a Facebook page that you can't comment on, because that's something the attorneys don't want to happen, because you just get down that whole line of negative comments instead of beneficial comments that are going to keep the city going and allow you to get information without going down that rabbit hole. So that, getting people involved, we've had cleanup days. A lot of people show up for cleanup days. Chambers has tons of events right now. There are people all up and down Main Street on those events. I think we're headed in the right direction. I think Henrietta's doing great. Hallmark, Christmas, I mean, it grew in one night, did it not? So many things have grown. I mean, Cruise Night, and citizens come out and get involved. You have the mistletoe market, that was citizens. Everybody gets, gets involved. You have that family member, you know that person, you get out, you see people out and about, people that you wouldn't think you would see out and about. They're at the events, they're getting involved. As far as cleanup, Henrietta looks better than it's ever looked. The streets, yeah, they need some work, but you know, that's a lot of money. It's about $50,000 for a walk. I don't know how many of you have the money to fork that out there, but it is not in our budget. I've heard that we have the money, it's just a matter of appropriating it appropriately. We, the budget's public record, and we have public meetings. So we would like for more people to be involved, we would like for more people to come volunteer. The Chamber is basically a volunteer. Everybody that comes and does it is volunteering. The Hallmark Christmas, y'all don't get paid anything to do that. You do that just because you wanted to do it, and it was a dream that you had and you made it happen. Everybody can do that. It just takes one person to make a change, and you could be that person. All you have to do is come to the city, ask, what can I do to help? Ask your friend, what can I do to help? Help that neighbor that needs help. You see they can't clean up their yard? Ask them if you can help. Go to Nichols Park and pick up trash. You don't have to be on the front page of the newspaper to know what's happening. I don't ever tell what I'm doing, I just do it. Most of you do the same thing, because it's not about what you're doing, it's about how you're doing it and getting it done. It's our hometown. We're here for a reason. Most of us have been here our whole lives. Most of us aren't going anywhere.
Thank you, Jennifer. Henrietta receives most of their money from sales tax. What opportunities do you see to add to the sales tax revenue for the city? This would start with Tristan.
I think I touched on this one already just a little bit. Salasol, like I said, started selling their own electricity, and when they did this, they didn't know how the program was going to work. They didn't know where it was going to come from, they didn't know where anything was going to establish, they didn't even know where the position, the position that they were at, because they were thinking and broadening their horizons and not just focusing solely on sales tax. That's just one I could look at. The transfer station, or dump, or something that we could work along the lines. Right now, citizens have to travel to Morris just to go to the closest dump facility, solid waste facility. We don't have anything here. That's another way to enter. And like Sean has said, more hotels, that increases more sales tax and more hotel tax. There's multiple streams of that revenue that we can start exploring. We're not going to say that it's going to happen over the first year, second year, but if we can start looking into that and actually try to see if it's a viable option, then we could end up in a better position than where we're at right now, and have more streams of revenue.
Sean?
I would go back with, I think it would be a big thing to have a new hotel, because not only the sales tax from the hotel, but just the many more events that we could bring to town with an ISO table, because we don't really have that now. So it's hard to bring events into town. So the more people that are coming here to go to events, the more they're going to be spending in our shops, in our stores, and it will just generate more sales tax. I think that's the primary thing.
Yeah, Buck?
Bringing people in is always going to be your biggest hit to get tax money in. The Chamber has worked really hard on getting tax money in. The city works hard on bringing businesses in. It's not an easy process. Times are hard. COVID hit hard, and it hit everybody hard. People are busy. People have their own commitments. There are people looking to bring businesses, but they want everything drawn up, ready, and given to them. They don't want to put money out for businesses right now. They want you to provide everything to them and then allow them to pay it off in the future. We have that, we have that with economic development. We can help them do that. That's what the committee is for. So we have all those points in place to be able to do that, to help people come to Henrietta. We're working with the Chamber as actively as we can to try to bring people in, and every day they're adding events to it, they're getting children involved, because children are our future. So you have to teach them, and they're so connected these days, they know more about what's happening than we do in five minutes. But life's hard, and COVID hit hotels the hardest. We had two coming. They had already had, looked at the specs, and had planned to build on the property out west, and as soon as COVID was over, they said, we can't do it. The hotels took too much of a hit, there's no way we can do it. They look at rooftops as well, they look at new construction, that's something else. Henrietta doesn't have new construction, new homes. That's something else we need to look at recruiting and bringing in. But it's a matter of building all of that up and getting it ready, and selling our city to others to be able to make that happen. So we just have to work together as a team to move forward.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks. Another great question, another great question. How long has this been going on? You have to look at yourselves and ask that question. I've asked the question, it's been going on for 15 years since I've been here. It wasn't like that before, there's been a shift in the way the city has grown, okay? So the answer to it is a combination of things. One, the strategic business plan that I mentioned, and also a council, City of Henrietta Advisory Council, that includes professionals that were graduates of Henrietta, got gone off and done their, got their masters or PhDs or whatever, whatever college, and retired, and so on and so forth. I've opened this question up to some of those folks, people who know the streets, I mean, professionals of streets, okay? The, the point of this, the driving is that combination of, when you do a strategic business plan, you take care of the streets so that you get people noticing that you've got something done out of the last two years, for instance, you can sell the rooftop that we mentioned earlier that could come in and say, hey, this is where we are, this is where we were before, this is where we're going, okay? So what happens is, is that you expand that, okay? Right now, in the financial statements in this town, there's roughly a billion dollars that can be distributed, okay, for things that are needed for the city of Henrietta. And nobody's going to come in here, okay, unless somebody's got the stuff now. It's been said that the town is in great shape, and, you know, I don't, I don't know how many of you live here in the 40s and the 50s, but it's a far cry from what I grew up in when I was a kid. The streets were just vibrant every day of the week, mostly on Saturdays. But the point of it is, is getting back to the sales tax, is that you increase the sales tax, it's going to take a lot of endeavor, my colleague here has mentioned a couple of things, and there's other ways to get that done, but it's going to take some driving to get a little, improve drivers. You got another minute?
All right.
Okay, thank you. So this will be, we'll start with Sean. How have you been active in the community with church, school, city, and government?
I try to go to the sin with God as I can. It's my childhood church, very fond of it, love being a pastor there. And as far as the school, I feel like I'm, I think most people know I'm a big sports fan, and I try to go cheerleading as many events as I can, especially my nieces and nephews. And what was the last part?
Just how have you been active in Henrietta?
Oh, in city government?
Yeah, city and government, yeah.
I consider most of the people on the city council, I've known them a long time, I try to go to the council meetings as often as possible, talk to them, and it's kind of the... It's kind of the, would be much more, can only be more involved by people on the council.
Thank you. So that would be Jennifer?
Ready?
Yeah.
Obviously, I've been involved in city government for quite some time. I believe in God. Always kept God in the city council meetings. We pray for forever and heeding. That will continue to happen as long as I'm on there. It would be my vote to do so, because I think when you take God out of things, that's where all the problems begin. So, being on the council, I have done a lot of things as far as city government. It's not a paid position, nobody gets paid to do it. Sat on five boards for ten years, never asked for a penny from the city. Didn't ask for mileage to go do it. You do what you need to do to help make your hometown a better place. We've all done that. I think the leadership that we have in place is a good leadership. I think we're headed in a great direction. I think everybody works as a team. I think it's moving forward. Does everybody always agree? Absolutely not, but that's what government's set up to do. There's a reason behind that. For everybody to have their opinion, but at the end of the day, to do what's best for the city. To do what's in the best interest of the citizens. You don't ever make everybody happy, and that's not gonna happen. You can't do that on a day-to-day basis in town and home. So you can't do that in a city. It's not gonna happen. But our city manager we hired, David Bullard, I think he's headed in a great direction. He is doing everything he could possibly do for the city. He was a fire chief for many years. He gave up a lot of the retirement to be able to come, the city manager, to do the things that needed to be done because he saw the passion in the city and what could happen and how we can move forward. He gave up a lot of things to do that, as well as his wife to be by his side to agree to do that. So just remember what our core team is and how we're moving forward, because if you don't put that in perspective, we're going nowhere.
Thank you. And that would go to Buck.
Yes, thank you. Well, when I arrived back in about a year, I suppose, and then my, my observations directed me in a different direction regarding the growth of City Henrietta and what was, what the problems, what the issues were. So I aligned myself with some of the people that were on the same page I was and some groups that I visited with when I ran for election in 2013, for instance. One of the things that I've given us, I got pulled out of the pipeline, I don't know if any of y'all know what that is, but I got pulled out of the pipeline to work for U C E G one in Longbend. Living in Longbend was like living in New York City in a combat environment. But the reason I was pulled out of the pipeline was because of my background and certain fields and my auditing skills. So I was pulled out and was part of a team that expected military, against the military mafia, okay? And that's what we did for about twelve months. And it may be relatable to some of you, but it was a major issue back in those days, okay? But the thing about it is, doing that in combat, it was kind of ridiculous. We thought it was ridiculous, but that's the way it was. The thing that I have been able to do since I've been here was doing some research, et cetera. And also, I've gone to other towns, much like this gentleman here, Tristan has, to Salasol. I've got some folks that I met over there that had helped. I've also been to some other towns in the state. From the stamp that what is gonna, what it's gonna take is gonna be, again, a hybrid strategic businessman, okay? With professionals that have been there before and know what they're talking about.
Thank you. Tristan?
I've been active in this town for years. In 2016, we started a community-wide Christmas dinner before any major Christmas events had started. We actually, it's a community-wide donation-based event, so the whole community comes together and makes this happen. I just get to be one that kind of spearheads it a little bit. I'm an active member of the Rotary Club, I'm an active member of the Chamber of Commerce. I am a wrestling coach, the Henrietta Knights Club Wrestling Coach. It's a 501 nonprofit here, I'm the president of that, and I'm also the head wrestling coach there. I've been active and involved with them for three years, I've been the head coach of this last year, and we went from seventeen kids to fifty-two kids in our first season. And so we've had a major turnaround. I'm actually actively engaged in one of the largest fundraisers in the youth club as ever undertaken. And we just released that this last week. We're raising two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to actually get our kids the building that they deserve. And so, we're shooting for an eight thousand square foot training center. And so that's gonna be for our youth club and for our kids. That's something that we are doing for our kids. Our board unanimously voted for it. I believe more than anything in our community. You can see it. Anytime we have somebody that needs help, if they need some kind of help, I try to help out the best that I can. Morris had their tornadoes. I went out to Morris and went out there for three days with our code and our company and clearing people's yards, driveways, houses, whatever we had to do with our equipment and our time and money. And when they had their tornadoes. Same thing goes for any other community. I've been to Farm Staw, I've been all over the state. I believe in our state, I believe in our community. I've traveled to thirty-six different states, it's working. And there's nowhere, nowhere like Henrietta, Oklahoma. And I can promise that.
Thank you. Okay, so Jennifer? Would that be next? Uh, yeah. Would you push for more cleanup around the town, including demolition of abandoned unsightly properties?
I think I touched on that a little bit earlier. We have been abating a lot of property. And Mr. Baymeyer said he was intending to do that when he ran. And he has actively pursued that significantly and tried to be active in town to look at all the houses that need torn down. It's just a matter of funding to get those torn down. We have actively worked on doing that. You know, we do have a strategic business plan, it's called a budget. And we work off the budget, and we have to stay within that budget. And it's only allowed to be done for one year at a time. We get, we do have a plan, and we work on that plan, and we've been working on that plan. So as far as cleanup, yes, there's cleanup. But Henrietta looks better than it's looked in many years. Look at Nichols Park, look at the Splash Pad, look at the park on Lake Road. I mean, drive around town, we have lots of hidden treasures that other cities would be fighting to just have a part of. So I think we're a very lucky town. I think we do have a plan, and I think the plan looks very well. And we do need volunteers, we do need cleanup, and we do need to get the houses torn down, and we're actively working on that.
Thank you. Buck? That would be to you, Buck.
So will you receive it?
Yes, sir. Would you push for more cleanup around the town, including demolition of abandoned unsightly properties?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's over two hundred, the last time I counted. So, you know, you're gonna, the problem that you have is that some of these are like a half a block off Main Street. You see when you drive up Main Street going west from seventy-five. You know, we gotta get rid of those. I mean, somehow, some way, whether it's a group committee put together just for that, okay? And I don't see that we have one that like that, if it's available. I haven't, I don't know about it. But that is certainly one of the, one of the four or five things that need to be done at the same time is getting rid, getting rid of those buildings, okay? And then some of the houses that are being lived in that are dilapidated and need to be torn down as well. So that's a major issue that it's gonna take some digging and some hustling and some creativity to get it done. And I think the citizens would respond to that as well, to the town hall meetings.
Thank you. Tristan?
Very much so. I actually have had several people that have called me and contacted me about dilapidated housing or properties and everything. And the city has warned them about coming on, they're getting ready to fix up their property. And they've deeded over the property for us to clean up. That's something that our company has done for about the last two or three years. We've done several properties in town. One was on Ferguson Street for two, no, the Clockwood Street over behind on us. There was one on Broadway, we had started, but there was some problems with the property land in Hyville and the abstract deed, and it didn't work out for us, so we had to completely stop there. But you can see, we had went, I think it was twelfth or thirteenth and Broadway, there's a big burned two-story house, and we had went in there and started cleaning it up and trying to get it ready to schedule with the city to get a controlled burn on it. I've offered up our land, we bought six acres in Henrietta about two years ago. We commercially zoned it. And that's a whole different story that we can get into as far as our zoning and our addresses and our nine-one-one addresses. There's quite a few issues that are there. It took me twelve months to get an address for a property. And businesses are coming in and wanting to do that, that's gonna be an issue. But as far as cleaning up, I've always, I've always been a firm believer in it. One thing I think that I would like to see the city try to do, like Tulsa does, is a green waste site. If you're not familiar with the Green Waste Site, it is a site for brush, green waste debris, leaves, no trash, no disposal trash. That's another form of municipality. While budgets are tight, we can figure out a way and hopefully get citizens to come together. You know, maybe since citizens have heavy equipment, they have dumpsters, they have dump trucks. Something that can save the city some money and volunteer their time to come out and take care of some of these dilapidated houses. And maybe that's a revenue, or maybe that's a stream that we need to look into.
Thank you. That would be to you.
The first thought that came to mind is, I think I've noticed more abatement in the last year than we've seen in quite some time. So just continue that same progress, I think we're on the right path with it. And another thing that over the last four or five years is the city, like as often as I can. And the third thing would be just community involvement, like maybe have a community cleanup day. Have volunteers pick out some spots that need to be cleaned up and just make a day of it, I think. But I think we're on the right path with those things, for sure.
Thank you.
I think that's the last one I have, yeah. Did you have?
Alright, this is gonna be the last question that we posed to you. Have you studied the city budget? And where would you make changes within it? That would go to?
Yeah.
Who is it?
That would be Buck.
I guess it is?
Yes.
That's a great question. So what you're saying, what would I change in the budget to get it done?
Have you studied the city budget and where you would make any changes?
That's a great, hard yes. I've looked at it a lot, not only myself, but other people. And that's why I would recommend the city budget and the efficiency committee right along with the City of Henrietta's Advisory Council. Some professionals to help drive what we're finding and seeing, okay? And the point that I'm driving at here is that there's other towns that had the same issues and the same experiences as Henrietta. I've been to some of them, I've even talked to the staff, if you will, of these smaller towns. A couple of them are in Texas, okay, I've visited with them. And the City of Henrietta's got the revenue to make some of these changes, okay? Now, it's not gonna happen overnight, there's no question about that. But if you like, if you do a house or two a year, that, okay? It's gonna take time to do that, but you gotta start somewhere. So in answer to your question, yes, but I'm not going to say where I would do it because it would have to be a, a more opinion of the city council, the advisory group, and the committee.
I'll be honest with you. I think there would have to be some more research into the budget, knowing where the money, where it can be spent, where it can be, you know, used, what it was appropriated for, what funding it came from. This question is really set up to kind of prod you a little bit. And I think that you would really have to understand more about the budget and where it came from to be able to make a more accurate assessment about it. Is there somewhere we can trim? Yes, how much are we gonna save? Could it be a thousand, could it be a hundred thousand? It's kind of topsy-turvy, but the city council budget is a very meticulous budget that each council member knows and where the funding is coming from, how it should be spent and what it's supposed to be spent on. And so, once you're elected that, I think that you can research the budget, know where the budget money's coming from a little bit more accurately, and then go off of that.
Yeah, kind of what Tristan said, like, one of the main things I would look forward to the most is diving more into the budget. But that's something you don't get like in-depth about unless you're actually on city council. And I would love to have that opportunity, because that would, that would be my specialty. So where we can, I'm sure there are ways that we can just be more conservative with spots and just watch where we're spending, maybe find some spots here and there. That, I mean, there's gonna be some years that we might need to spend more on the abatements. There might be some years we have to invest more into the roads. I mean, I think it's, I think it's gonna vary. And there's, there's no way I can answer that question specifically without being on the council and diving into the numbers.
Well, you all know that I've been on the council. I've been on the council for twelve years. So I do know the budget. We've worked on the budget really hard, it's our oil. It needs to do the budget, it is going out. To say the least.
Thank you.
So the budget, you project what you think you're gonna spend, you look at it just like a home budget. But then you have a water line that busts out, that you have to spend fifty thousand dollars on. Do you have that in your home budget that you can just pop in there and go, oh, well, this week I almost spent fifty thousand dollars on this? So you have to plan for the unplanned, because it happens. Every single time, when you think everything's going good, bam, out of nowhere. One of the sewer pumps go out. One of the pumps at the water plant goes out. The electronics go out. Not even to mention all the obsolete stuff that we have. So we have lots of areas that need improvement, lots of areas that need money, lots of areas that, yes, we can probably shave it here, to move it here, but then is that gonna change? Because we have a balanced budget. We work with two different companies to get that balanced budget. We work hard to keep it where it's at. But does it always stay balanced? No, that's why we have to do budget amendments every year. Sometimes orally, sometimes monthly. But we do what's in the best interest of the city to try to keep it balanced and try to keep it moving forward, because we want those services like fire. We want that police service. We want the water service. We want the sewer service. We want all of those things that we expect on a daily basis, and without that balanced budget, we don't have that. So that's something to keep in mind when you start trying to trim the budget, because if I toast or if I fire five people out of that and your water goes out today, you may not have it tomorrow. It may be seven to ten days before you have that. And finding hard workers and people that wanna work is not easy. Finding people that are on call that'll come in when that water goes off and when it's minus two degrees outside and they're in water up to their chest is not easy. Fighting that fire that's two hundred and eighty degrees in a hundred and ten degree weather is not easy. Being on the city council isn't easy either. You get a lot of complaints and very little praise. So just remember, at the end of the day, thank a worker, thank a city worker, and thank people that do what they do for the city. Chamber, anybody that worked for the city that does things for the city, they're doing it out of the kindness of their heart, it's not because they have to.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, that's gonna conclude our question and answer section. So we're gonna go back to the original lineup and let each candidate summarize their platform or just give us a little, little bit more if you'd like. You have three minutes, so.
A lot of stuff we've already touched on, but I think my top, my. A lot of stuff we've already touched on, but I think my, top of my platform would be the budget. I think I work with numbers significantly larger than the budget every day. I might be able to see some things that other people don't see. But the second thing would be, being more forward-thinking and looking for opportunities that will bring in revenue. Because there's nothing more that's going to increase the budget more than bringing in revenue. Just different events, businesses, things of that nature. One thing I think we could do pretty easily to improve the quality of life is get more lighting around town, all around neighborhoods. I think that could help a lot with, I know we have a lot of debt in town, I think everybody knows that, that could be beneficial in that regard and just safety in general. And as far as the streets, I have some numbers that I've been diving into. Basically like three levels of asphalt repair. Your first, you're looking at just changing, just fixing potholes and cracks. And these numbers are based off one mile of work, just potholes and cracks are about 20,000 a mile. Re, just resurfacing, which would be great, is about $160,000 per mile if you're doing it effectively. Full reconstruction is like half a grand. May not have, may not be able to get into that too much, but we could, if we start, we get like civil, we gotta come up with a plan. Get a civil engineer, I don't know if this has been done before, get a civil engineer that kind of gets us the outline map of what we're looking at, that's where we could start. And then start budgeting appropriately and start resurfacing in the worst areas first as we can. And it's, there's no way it's not going to be a very long process. But if we don't come up with a plan and start budgeting for it, it's gotta start somewhere. That's the only way it's going to happen. But that's primarily my platform.
Thank you. Jennifer, you would be next.
Quality of life, that's what every city's looking for. They want something you can do things in. Henrietta really don't have that right now. We have the hot trails, we have rodeos, we have the park, we had Highway to Henrietta. We've had things, but they come and they go. So it's a matter of trying to recruit those people that are gonna keep things here that's going to make that tax base grow time after time after time, not a one time. So getting that in the process. COVID, like I said, I know you're tired of hearing that, but it made a big hit on everybody's economics and it is still impacting everybody. So I do think that's turning around. I do think that businesses are looking at coming to small towns, they are looking at bringing that revenue to the city budget. Hotels for sure are coming back around, Airbnbs, Verbo, all that stuff. I mean, our park is a gem, they've done a whole lot to the park, it looks significantly better. There are things to do here for small children. It's a matter of getting things now for adults to do and finding those avenues to make that happen. I've been on the council for 12 years, look at the city. I mean, if what I've done doesn't speak for itself, then there's nothing more I could say today that could change that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that would be you, Buck?
My closing comments are scarless. My platform for the city is driven by common sense, transparency, accountability and the rule of law. Since the 50s and 60s, there has been a major shift in city governance. I think we can generate a $15 million a year enterprise. The new committee, city budget and efficiency committee will be created that would dig into every penny that the city receives and expenses. Today's citizens have no idea what is going on behind those doors. Going to council meetings are, and are during the timeframe of the budget being put together is a questionable manner. I've already reached out to several individuals from the Henrietta Advisory Council. Henrietta is fortunate to have distinguished graduates who love Henrietta goes beyond words. They bring enormous business experience in manufacturing, retail, industrial, accounting, library science and so on to the table. They will provide a heavy lifting for Henrietta's future. These people love Henrietta, like many of us do, and they wanna participate and there's no charge for it. They wanna do it because they love Henrietta and they will point here. A key critical city parameter that has been ignored for decades is the updated city limits. Acceptable zoning and professional coenforcement committee is a core issue or a city's immediate attention. It has more to do with the dilapidated houses than some other things that have been discussed. Nichols Park, the crown jewel, a one, three, five, seven to 25-year strategic plan would be initiated. The Parks and Recreation Committee with, with input from the advisory council will provide leadership with development of Nichols Park. So the, the location, location, location of Henrietta is the crossroads of success. My platform provides a 25-year strategic plan starting in year one through year 25 to put together. When I'm gone, then somebody has something to work with or they can change it. Depends on what you got, but what you can do with this is sell it to the people that wanna come here, that retailer we talked about earlier, other companies, manufacturing. If you know you're gonna be somewhere in here, I know where to go, I can go get a flag, come here, but they're not gonna come here unless you have some changes made. If you saw them changes and got a two-year, three-year history and thought they were moving, they'll do it. Clearly, my academic and career achievements more than demonstrate business acumen and leadership. It was no mistake I was selected for a $200 million a year undertaking. I'm asking for your vote. If you make a difference in Henrietta's future, my commitment to you will be measured in weeks, per month, not minutes, not hours. Thank you for your time and God bless Henrietta and the United States.
Thank you.
All right. I think we all have said the same thing. We've got to broaden our horizons and our revenue, whatever way that may be. We have to start searching out other streams of revenue in order to start building the city we all want. The other thing that I would like to see maybe looked at, did you know we had the opportunity for a service road when they built I-40 and the highway systems in? A lot of people don't, but we had the opportunity to build a service road to connect one side of town to the other side of town, much like Shawnee did. And I think as a city, we can start researching that and trying to pull that back. Because if you look on Main Street, we have a very limited amount of retail space. Where are they gonna build at? We do have the west side, but if you get a couple of good-sized hotels out there, that place is pretty much already taken as much as anything else, the retail strip. And then you're back to square one again. So we're gonna have to broaden our horizon, we're gonna have to get others, other outside-the-box initiatives and we have to learn how to help bring our education of our citizenry up. Right now, Oklahoma speaks double, O'Mogg County actually speaks, last time I looked at it, the state average for illiteracy rate was 14%. O'Mogg County bolsters a 29% illiteracy rate. So for one in every third, two people that we know, they cannot read or write. How do they become productive citizens if they can? We've got to start making a town that's for everyone. We talk about cliques, you're looking at a person right here that's not involved in any clique. I stretch across the board with everyone, whether you're the lowest of lows or you're the highest of highs. I shake your hand, I look at you in the eye and I'll tell you exactly what I'm thinking. And I believe in this town. I took the biggest risk two and a half years ago buying that six acres and, and reinvested it and it taught me a lot. It took me 12 months to get a 911 address. Do you think a new business is gonna wanna wait 12 months to get an address? It took another six months just to get someone out there to even talk about it and figure out where the water and the electricity was. We've got to become more efficient in the way that we operate so that we can bring these communities in. Everything's at the click of a button now. Everything, except our town. And we need to get that to the spot where we can be that way.
Thank you. That concludes our summarizations. And you, Hilda, you have anything else?
I want to say thank you to everyone who just played in this. You all brought up some great points and I hope everyone listened to them and gained something from it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to all of you. April 14th, we'll see you next year.
Yeah, so we're gonna enter, but they, if, if anyone would like to ask any questions, if anyone would like to ask any questions, we can pour the wine or, any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Any questions?
Same.
So I, I did have a question. I think it had to do with involvement. So this, this is a, a non-paid, it's a volunteer, well, you get voted in, but it's pretty much volunteer work. Is there a reason why some of you haven't volunteered before this, you know, like go to the meetings, ask what needs to be helped, go ahead and go clean up the park, because they, they do cleanups like that? Is there a reason why you haven't volunteered before or are you just now entertaining the fact or has it been a life thing or? You don't have to answer. I.
You know, I don't mind, I don't mind touching that, touching that question. I haven't for a lot of reasons. I do 20, 30 hours a week of work on Henrietta and have since 2010. It's just not visible, okay, from your standpoint. I do a lot of research and, and I'll find things out, so on and so forth. I'm retired, so I'm, I don't have the same degree I had when I was old, or 45 years old. But I know a lot of folks that are on the same page as I am, okay, just put it that way. And, you know, there's a lot of people that I don't know because most of, most of the ones that I grew up, I mean, I go to a lot of funerals, which is unfortunate, but that's just, that's the way life is. You know, this is a very invigorating, this is the first time I've been able to say anything about any of the stuff that I've talked about since I got here in Henrietta in 2010. It's been, it's been a struggle in front of the people, okay? So I just lived alone. But I enjoyed my time in the chamber when Roy was here. I actually did a project for Roy on a, on a situation and went to three different towns and asked them how they put theirs together and came back with, hey, you know, we don't need to be doing this. So, but who's to say I wouldn't be joining something later, later even in the chamber?
And you don't have to answer. I, you just, I, I volunteer a lot and I just.
That's what I was just getting ready to say. I think there's not probably anything I haven't had my hand in in this now. Wrestling, we practice four days a week, we have 16-hour days and tournaments. And so I'm spending around 35 to 45 hours a week just alone and volunteering, not including working and keeping the full-time business with my kids. So I've changed rotary. Anytime anyone needs help, I volunteer for the Henrietta Education Foundation when they redid the tennis courts years ago. We volunteered down there and cut all the trees down and helped them clean up the lot there. If it's Henrietta, I believe in it and anybody can ask me at any point in time, hey, I need some help here, can you come help me? And if I have April 2, if I have the time off to, they'll do. There's been complaints when the Henrietta, the highway to Henrietta came in, there was some lawns on Main Street that wasn't mowed and wasn't up yet, that wasn't, you know, to par for everybody. No one was gonna go out and do it, so we did. We went out and took care of the lawn for the gentleman. We didn't have a yard, a lawn mower or weed or, we went out and took care of it. We've opened up our property for a green waste site if anybody ever needs to dump their green waste there. You can actually process up to 100 yards of debris, 100, I think 100 tons or 100 yards of debris without having a full, long, permitted site. So we walked the city on the cleanup days, but we were a little too late with the cleanup. We didn't, they didn't know how it would work, having the city endorse that. Me and Dylan must have talked about it. But I have done several things to be actively involved in this community. Used to get to come to city council meetings a lot more than I have. If I don't make it there in person, I watch it on Bruce's The Henrietta, I go back and take a look at it and see what's going on or try to read it in the newspaper, so.
I'll just be brief. I ran for city council two years ago, but Vernon was just too formidable of a fellow. So I would try to work with him, then never run against him again.
Most of you know me and you know I've had my hand in a little bit of everything here, spent lots of hours working for the city. Behind the scenes is definitely the majority of the work that's done for the city. It isn't that we're hiding anything and there isn't transparency, it's all there. Come ask for it, you can see it, there's nothing to hide. We've had plenty of audits due to my opponent requesting them. So we have had those, you can see those as well if you would like, but there's nothing to hide in the city. It's all in meetings for that specific reason. We don't need outside meetings for that. We have committees that bring them to the council. There's committees to do that. There's cleanup days. We have all of those things in progress. It's just a matter of getting the people out to do that and to help do that instead of trying to destroy it. It takes, it takes all of us and if we don't work as a team, none of it's gonna work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We'll return now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys.